Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the exits, which are to the left of the room. In the event of emergency, please move in a calm and orderly manner, and please do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record and for minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order they appear on the agenda. Extra copies should be near the door as you come in. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give his or her address, and present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If this case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves, along with their address and direct -- I'm sorry, along with their name and address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any of the public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to public input, and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input will be allowed at that point. And with that, just as a heads up, the first item on the agenda has been postponed until next month. That is the revised site plan approval for 285 Medley Center Parkway. And with that, Donna, will you call the first case?
PB 1810-2, upon the matter request by William M. Pierce acting as agent for Sequoia Realty LLC for revised site plan approval for the redevelopment of an ancillary parking lot with site-related improvements on premises 250 Empire Boulevard and tax parcel ID 107.072-77 in an R1 residential district.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Bill Price. I am at 305 Sylvan Road in Rochester, 14618. With me tonight, David Secconi, one half of Sequoia Realty, and Alex Amerin, civil engineer from Costas Engineering. We were here before you a few weeks ago to -- in the workshop to present the project. We have secured the variances required for the project. This is -- the concept behind this is the property includes two sites owned -- both owned by Sequoia Realty. The rear lot is a smaller lot that was never incorporated into the front lot, and it was not re -- it was not issued a use variance back when the property was -- received a use variance to operate a daycare center. So we're looking to do improvements on the back of additional parking. In order to do that, we did need to secure the use variance and parking or an area variance for the amount of parking. Those have been secured. We have laid the project out to include an additional 10 parking spaces and the associated stormwater management facilities. In our meeting, we talked about several items, one being the grading that we're doing here. Part of the issue here is we do have 16 existing parking spaces. Approximately six of those parking spaces toward the back of the existing lot are rendered pretty much unusable in the wintertime, when it's winter or when there's ice and snow on the pavement, just because it's currently so steep, you just can't get in and out of your car, hard to walk on, and it's nearly impossible to plow, and we also have to pull the dumpster location forward because of the steepness of the grade. So part of this project is to resolve that grade issue and add the parking to the back. We're leaving some of the slope that exists there today. The new parking lot is going to be substantially lower than the surrounding properties, but in an effort to make sure there is adequate buffer to the neighbors, we are leaving some of the slope in there so that we can plant that slope and create a vegetative buffer with the neighbors. In our meeting, we discussed what about lighting? We had not actually proposed to do any lighting out here, but kind of agreed that there's going to be times of the year, early mornings and later in the afternoon, early evening, that we would want to have lighting for employees arriving and leaving before and after dark. We're not intending that this lighting be a dusk-to-dawn light system, so it would be on timers, come on just ahead of staff arriving in the morning. Approximately 6:30 in the morning would be the earliest staff would start to show up, and 6:30, 7 o'clock at night would be the time that they would be gone, but I think we might set a time of about 8 o'clock as the time that they would be shut off. So from 8 to 6:30, 8:00 p.m., 6:30 a.m., those lights would be -- would not be on. We also talked about extending the sidewalk that currently runs across the face of the building, adjacent, you know, between the building and the parking lot, and running that parking -- I'm sorry, that sidewalk out to the street and connecting to the sidewalk system in the street. And those are on the drawing. Hard to see, I apologize. This is the existing building, Empire Boulevard. There's a sidewalk on this side of the building, and we would take that sidewalk down to the street system. This is the new parking back here. The two light poles that we're proposing would be on either side, kind of skewed a little bit to the east side. Notice that the residents over here are -- I'm sorry. Thank you. Is it working? We decided to put those light poles a little bit toward the more easterly half of the parking lot. We still believe that we can light these spaces adequately from those locations. We've identified the snow storage area. We'll probably be plowing this way, and we've allocated this area at the end of this parking lot as our snow storage area. We do currently have a dumpster on-site. It's a, I believe, a four-cubic-yard dumpster, and we would propose to put that in an enclosure embedded in this embankment. So we would take the segmented block wall, come down here, create a notch, and then come across here with the rest of the wall, retaining this slope up to the adjacent neighbors, and we would have a gate across the front of it. This way, a truck would come in, they would have to pull forward, back up, come in, grab it, and then pull forward, going out. Currently, that dumpster is sitting right about here in the parking lot, taking up a space, so we would not be using a parking space for that dumpster. The landscape is the same as we had proposed before. We have had discussions. We received a phone call from LaBella Associates late Friday and got comments today, so we've had discussions with them. Where the previous design had not anticipated tying into the town's stormwater management system, we will be tying into the stormwater line here. So we'll be able to actually use the -- we're going to change the, what was a rain garden on this side with what is called a level spreader to dissipate the water as it goes off-site. Will now be turned into a biofilter, two, two-and-a-half feet deep of filtration media, and then there'll be a pipe in the bottom that will be tied into the town's stormwater system. So we'll be eliminating that level spreader and actually directing the overflow into the town's system. So that's just a little bit different than the last time we presented the stormwater management system. Did I say that right? Okay, thank you. I think that's most of what we had discussed. Happy to address any questions.
So do we have drawings on the dumpster that you just described?
No, you do not. You don't have any drawing. We have not resubmitted since we had the workshop meeting. We were trying to wait to get the -- all of the comments from LaBella and the county before we made all of our changes, and we got those today, so we'll be able to -- we had conversations with LaBella, and I think everything is -- we'll be able to accomplish from an engineer's.
So I was just trying to understand, the neighbors on the other side, what will they see of the dumpster?
On the --
You said it's going to be into the -- yeah.
So this area in here is approximately six feet lower than the top of the embankment, and then I honestly don't know if that continues to rise, or if it -- let's just say it levels out here. Are you wondering about what these folks will see of the dumpster?
Right.
They'll be -- they won't see it, it'll be down below them.
Okay.
And if our walls aren't high enough to cover the dumpster, we would add a fence to the top and then gates across the front.
That's what I was trying to understand, if that's --
Yeah, so we will make sure that, you know, it's probably going to be six feet, but that will still be below the height of the top of the berm.
Bradley, do you have any?
No.
Mary?
No.
No.
Michael?
Alan?
Yeah, Mr. Price, were you able to attend the zoning meeting?
Yes, I did.
On October 1st, and you were able to attend the full meeting?
Yes, I was there, yes.
From the beginning?
Yes.
Great. Do you remember the case involving 180 Whipple Lane?
Yes.
Was there a problem with that case?
Um...
So could you enlighten me, Alan?
I --
The reason I'm asking that question, I've been to visit the site.
Yeah.
The sign's missing from your -- the public notification is missing from your project as it was with 180 Whipple?
For the zoning meeting?
For this meeting. There is no notification on that property.
Okay, okay.
And I've been there three times.
Oh, I do remember that.
Does somebody know where is that?
I apologize. I don't, and I didn't -- I'm not sure I made the owner aware that the planning board notice needed to be up. We did have the zoning board notice up the day we got the sign, so...
Because those are important signs, and I'm sure you heard the chair explain the importance of those signs to the community.
Right.
Not just for the applicant, because the applicant benefits from the feedback that they get from the community.
Right.
But it is important to the community to have that notification that a project is happening. I am disappointed in that. Was Seeker updated to indicate that the water flow now is going into the storm sewer?
Nothing has been updated, other than, you know, this drawing to show you that we took into account the comments we received at the workshop.
Okay, and then we asked for a bike rack on this project. Is there an indication where that might be located?
I don't know if you were able to hear, but Jeanne Harris represented -- she's the Director of Operations for Generations, and they have a place inside where the employees do store it.
Okay, so we're getting --
They have a -- they do have a designated --
That's right, now I do recall that. And then you indicated light poles. How tall are those poles?
Well, I think we'd like to keep them 12 to 14 feet at the top of the fixture, but we have to do the photometrics to see what kind of foot candle plots we get. So I would say, you know, 14 --
Because that's going to give quite a view for that neighbor that lives on Lafayette, because they're overlooking that plot, so they're going to be seeing those lights.
Well...
Especially during the winter when the foliage is --
They will --
-- the trees.
I would say you're correct in that they will see light. It would be hard for them not to, but they won't see the light source. It won't be a glare, because the LEDs, they're flat, and they sit up in the housing, and we're --
Now they have nothing.
There's nothing there.
Right.
Correct.
And we talked about maybe some ballast streets with lights on them?
Little bollards, yeah. Yeah, we couldn't really find, you know, a bollard that gave you enough light distribution and could stay out of the way of snowplows. So we kind of looked at putting a, you know, a 12, 14-foot fixture on top of like a two-foot pole base.
So do you have an indication then on -- you don't have anything in writing for us to examine how much light is going to be shining anywhere, right?
Well, we do not. We do have cut sheets that we were prepared to submit, and we would definitely keep -- the idea here is just enough light to get people to their cars safely so they can see their keys and get in their cars and get out of the parking lot. The idea isn't for these to be on all night. This isn't the type of security lighting that will be bothering the neighbors, you know, past 8 o'clock at night. So enjoyment of their property should continue the way it is.
Okay. I still would prefer to see those down a little lower, and I think that there's probably a good example at, I think it's Christian Homes
Okay.
-- over on University Avenue, near Elton Street.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
They put bollards in there where they do have snow removal.
Okay.
So...
On that interior parking lot they have?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, geez, you're lucky, because I can't remember what my next question is, so...
We can come back to it. Just to kind of piggyback on Alan's comments about the lighting for just one second, if poles are used at, say, a 12-foot pole height, just to pick one of the things you said, on a two-foot base, that puts it at 14 feet?
I would want the luminaire at 14 feet.
Yeah.
So I could drop the pole to a 10-foot pole.
Yeah, so if the luminaire's at roughly 14, looking at the grades on the site, that's going to put it roughly, based on what we're looking at here, six-ish feet
Above the top of the grade.
-- on the neighbors, kind of.
Right.
So I think maybe back shields, if that is what you end up with, would be a really good idea.
Yep.
I know the LEDs are kind of full cutoff on the back, but I think just to protect the eyesight from those lumineers, I think that would be
Sure.
-- a really good idea.
Yep.
And then my only other question is, have you had any thoughts about what the dumpster enclosure is made out of?
Well, the base part of it's going to be that segmented block
With the retaining wall block?
Coming around, retaining wall, and then putting probably board-on-board, you know, structure on top, and then the front would be a board-on-board with galvanites.
Or something.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Yep. Think you've seen the detail before.
Michael, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
So before I open the public hearing, Alan, is this going to --
Right now, I'm still on.
Well, please, still have time. Okay, with that, I'd ask you to take a seat. We'll open the public hearing. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board, please step forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. So I'm just going to throw out there, I'm a little concerned that we don't have the drawings on the dumpster. A little concerned we don't have a lighting plan. I'm also concerned that possibly the neighbors didn't get proper notification, but I would assume they did get mailed the notification.
Yeah, notification would have gone to a generous, and I say generous meaning that our minimum is 200 feet from the property, from the edge of the property, and generally we err on the side of caution and go further than that to make sure that folks who are in the immediate vicinity of the project get notified.
But just a reminder that that is to registered property owners, not necessarily any tenants that would be in that area.
They're addressed to the record owner of the property.
Right.
Correct.
I mean, I think it's a good project. I'm just concerned about the paperwork, but I'll defer to the board
Yeah, I'm not so sure that there's a whole lot of use for this project.
What you all think. Yeah, and I think, just for your edification, I think when you stepped out, Alan was mentioning that the signage is not present on the site.
I'm sorry, I didn't --
That's why I think that comment was brought up about who was notified, because Alan said he stopped by multiple times and didn't see any signage.
I've been there three times, and there's been no notification.
So the posted sign...
And even if it was the three days that I was there, if it's required for 10, that means 30% of the time, I know it wasn't there.
I -- just so, the board's sort of information, I have to double-check. I mean, it's a standard practice. I don't know that it's legally required. We post it publicly, it's in the agenda in the paper, and the postcards go to neighboring properties, so it's an abundance of caution. I don't know if it's legally required. I'm just sure that is a practice.
Yeah, I can tell you that I can't find it.
I don't think it is.
I couldn't find it in the code.
It's not in the code, and it's not provided by state law, but I think, you know, it's a reasonable thing for the town to ask people to do, but it's not a legal requirement. So it wouldn't be deficient not to have that notice.
But when they do sign out, there is an agreement that they're agreeing to, isn't there?
There isn't. It's because it's also into the zoning board.
Right.
The sign may have been posted for that, and they may have thought that they were -- they had met their obligation, so I have to double-check to see what --
I'm not sure it's going to influence me tonight, but I think that if we're going to do it, let's just do it and make it consistent. If not, then let's not do it and make it consistent.
So if we do move --
But I think there's importance to it.
Yeah, if we do move forward, I mean, I think it's a good project. Are we going to make a contingent upon review of these plans by the staff then, or...
You could do that.
I think it's a lot of changes.
I'm not comfortable with that.
I mean, there's an awful lot of --
I would be real happy with preliminary and have them come back for final.
I think that the applicant did do all the things that we had asked for, and that's great, but there are fairly significant changes that have not been reflected on the drawings, and that makes me feel it's not a couple of things that we're asking for. It's especially with this dumpster enclosure, and we've been really consistent with applicants who are doing parking lots to do dumpster enclosures, and we've also asked them to do the split block face, and I know that in this application, it's probably not necessary because that'll be buried in the ground, but I think we should be able to see that so that when other applicants come to us, we can say, yeah, they didn't do split block face because we could clearly see it was buried in the hill. I mean, there's lighting, there's a sidewalk, there's a dumpster enclosure, which is pretty significant.
Lighting? I mean, we have nothing on lighting.
Lighting, also the --
That's what's giving me the -- giving me heartburn.
Yeah, the lighting is something I want to see.
You know, they have a timer that's going to shut them off at 8, and I understand they're not all-night security lighting, but it's 7:30 right now, and if I was sitting in my living room and someone had just put in a 14-foot pole light and it was on right now, I wouldn't be super excited about it. I know you're talking about shielding and stuff, but I'd like to see the numbers.
No, I agree.
I think it counts.
It sounds like everybody's got the same concerns, or at least enough of us. How do we feel about doing Seeker and then preliminary on the site? Can we do that?
I think the zoning board -- has the zoning board already issued a negative declaration, Carrie?
The zoning board issued its negative declaration, and then the planning board has before it a draft, Part II and Part III, to address the site plan components. But if you wanted to, you could hold Seeker, if you're not going to move forward with -- you could also, you could hold Seeker until you are ready to make a decision, or you could do it now.
So was the intent to do an uncoordinated review?
Yeah, this is being done as an uncoordinated review.
Okay.
We had done it that way because the zoning board had a use variance before it, and there was no sense in exploring the site plan if a use variance wasn't going to be granted. So that's the reason we opted for an uncoordinated review, and it's unlisted action, so we have that ability.
The other thing that would be good about holding off on the Seeker is that they could update that part about the runoff and where it's going.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable if there's changes have been identified, that we can analyze them further in the Seeker.
Okay, so do we just have to table Seeker, or do we have to extra vote?
Actually, I think you just -- there's nothing -- Seeker is the action you have to take before you can render a decision, so if you're not going to render a decision, you just wait to do Seeker. So at this point, if this board can determine whether it wants to move forward with a decision or if it wants to table the application for additional information.
I would go for tabling.
Yeah, it's table --
I would agree.
-- since we're to adjourn it than to do preliminary. If we do preliminary, then I think we have to do Seeker, don't you?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah. So, once again, do we just -- we recommend tabling it till the next meeting, or do we have to vote on that?
Yeah, I'll defer to our deputy attorney, but you'd be making a motion to table the application.
So I'll make a motion to table, so in regards to case number PB 1810-2, upon the matter request by William M. Price acting as agent for Sequoia Realty LLC for revised site plan approval for the redevelopment of an ancillary parking lot with site-related improvements on premises 250 Empire Boulevard and tax ID 107-07-2-77 in an R1 residential district, that we table this until the next meeting and all the proper documentation is submitted.
Second.
Chairman, we just need the vote.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to write it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No, nay. No abstains.
And just to note, there's a slight change in next month's scheduled meetings. There's only a one-week separation between the workshop and the public hearing night. It's November 19th is the workshop meeting, and November 26th is the regular public hearing meeting. So I'm sharing that for this board and for those viewing at home, and the applicant, and it's mostly, I think, because of the holidays and the way things fall. Oh, and Veterans Day, I believe that's the...
Yeah.
It's 12th.
All right, and that was the only matter for the board, but we do have minutes, if I could get everybody's attention. Thank you, and thank you. Look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.
I've looked over the minutes, I didn't see anything.
So in regards, could you make a motion then, Alan? I got one question on the minutes. Sorry. On the first application that we had, we had had a number of Thank you. -- conditions on the signage, and my memory's telling me we had something in there about the allowance of an additional sign as long as it complied with...
Isn't that the easterly sign the first thing?
Oh, that's called out there. Is that what that one is?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry. Yep, that makes sense, I apologize. I'm good.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we approve the minutes from the regular planning board meeting of September 24th, 2018.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nay or staying? Data passed.
I'm sorry, we missed who the second was, I apologize.
Evelyn.
Evelyn, thank you.
Unless there's any other matters before the board, I'll entertain an adjournment.
I'll give you a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Thank you.
Thank you.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the ICAAT Planning Board on ICAT Government We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the ICAAT Planning Board on ICAT Government Access. Access.